Okay, it's seven o'clock. I would like to welcome everybody to the Roxbury Town Board meeting tonight. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Moving right along. Before we start the meeting tonight, I have a special award we would like to give out to a very special individual. And this gentleman has been a part of Roxbury for over 50 years. He lived here, grew up here. He has been our constable for 49 years, maybe something like that. Anyway, Steve Williamson has just turned 50 years of service to the Delaware County Sheriff's Department and the town of Roxbury. Most of those years as town of Roxbury constable, for a few years in the beginning, he was also at Delaware County Sheriff's Deputy. Steve, you want to come up here?
I see the guys.
Okay, so we have a, we have a small token of our appreciation. To be honest, we've been trying to do this for about the last five months. We started this process about the time COVID hit. Diane ordered the plaque and was instrumental in putting this all together for us. However, then we had several meetings that were on Zoom and we didn't really feel it was fit to do this on Zoom. So we waited and finally we have a meeting to do this. And fortunately, it's in Grand Gorge, which is the town Steve grew up in, so. Some of you probably don't agree that that was a good place where Steve grew up. I'd like to read this. Stephen L. Williamson in recognition of 50 years of distinguished and dedicated law enforcement serving its units, the residents of the town of Roxbury and Delaware County and Scourry Counties, presented by the Roxbury Town Board. And the date on it says 2020 because that's when we tried to get it. Anyway, Steve and I have had a lot of adventures together as me as fire chief and me as department for many years. So we have all shared a lot of stories and spent a lot of time standing on the side of the road at car accidents and all sorts of other adventures. But I just want to say personally, thank you. Somehow I believe that, Steve. Craig, I'd like to have you come up as well. Say a few words.
I have a certificate of death, Steve. Steve, I'd like to present this to you today. It says, in grateful recognition of your 50 years of dedicated and faithful service to the town of Roxbury and the people of Delaware County, your devotion to duty, service, and the people of Delaware County sincerely respected and admired. May God bring you lots of love, happiness, and health in your future endeavors. I would just like to say, you know, you can't, and I'm sure the board appreciates that and everyone else here in the room does too. You can't beat the atmosphere of a small town. And the best, one of the best things from my experience in a small town is the local police agency. The people that are there, they know everybody, they know the comings and goings of every person, and they know where to find information and how to help people best within their local communities. Steve epitomizes that with his dedicated service to Roxbury. And I can tell you right now, whether it be members of my office or members of New York State Police, when we need something, when we need eyes and ears or information, especially with anything that happens in Roxbury, the first phone call he makes is Steve Williamson. So we appreciate your service very much, Steve.
One thing I'd like to add to that, Craig said, is we, I have had constant times, I'm also on the Delaware County for the supervisors, Public Safety Committee. And the dispatchers all tell me, please don't let Steve retire because he's an invaluable source.
Well, I'm going to retire. And this, I'm being honest. Next year, I told them, I'm going to be done. I want to thank everybody for the facts and your support. Down here for helping out. Stephanie and I miss her for seven minutes. I call them, they're on the security and help me out. Where is the house? When it looks like and stuff like that. It's all named, Gary. And we take care of it. My thanks are very much, all of you.
Well, thank you for coming, by the way. It was a process just getting in here, to be honest.
Thank you, Bradley.
Thank you, Sheriff Moon. Appreciate you being here. Okay. Moving right along. First, I do have one more public service announcement for anybody that has not heard, which I've done the best we can with that. We are under, for both Grand Gorge and Roxbury, we are under a boil water notice at this time. We had a major leak in our water system. Which actually turned out between Grand Gorge and Roxbury. We spent most of the weekend trying to find it. Finally did yesterday afternoon. The problem basically was a faulty valve in the system, but it dumped enough water that it actually drained the Roxbury reservoir. And because of that, we did get some siltation problems in the system and had to issue a boil water notice. We hope to have that rescinded within the next couple of days after the proper testing is done and everybody is happy. We did send notices to everybody today and we put it on the radio station and every place else we could think of on a weekend. It actually started, they discovered it early, early Saturday morning. And it was a very difficult leak to detect because it was in an area where most of the water was going in the river. So we couldn't really find it. So it was through a whole day long and most of one night of process of illumination that we discovered where it was. Thanks to our water crew, it worked out well. We got it done. So now we're just in the testing phases and making some finishing repairs to get it finalized. Okay, that being said, board has the March 8 minutes. If anybody has any questions or comments.
I do have a change for the abstract. For general fund, voucher number 75, MDT insurance. The amount on the abstract was 25980 and it's 35980. That was the total amount. The total general is $75,087.
All in favor?
Hey, Alan, can you ask everyone to speak louder? It's really hard to hear.
Sure. Let me, give me just two seconds. Jessica, can you boost the microphone just a little bit? You have control of the meeting, so I can't change it.
What do you want me to do?
Maybe I can do it. Hold on.
I can't control your microphone.
I got it. I just had to find the right button. Okay, hopefully that's better. So anybody that speaks up, we are on Zoom. We do have met several people on Zoom. So if you can, when you give a reporter talk, please speak up as clearly as possible. Okay, first off, we have the gentleman here from Hughes Energy who are going to give us a brief update on the project happening here between Roxbury and Prescott.
This is a good place to stand. Yeah, thanks so much for having us here. I want to thank the board and Al for inviting us today. We'd like to just give a quick update on the project that we're working on. Dane. Last name is Mick Spedden. Okay, M.C. S is in Sam, P is in Peter, E.D. Oh, hey. But thank you for having us. And with the project right now, which is our, you know, we're going to hyperspeed composting system, which we take organic waste and we turn it into a fiber, which we then use as fuel that can be used instead of wood pellets or actually instead of gasoline, you can make liquid fuel on. But the facility, which will simply take organic waste and compost it into a fiber. We're at the D E C. We've been working at the D E C for a little over a year and a half now. And they are the lead agency in the project, which will be at the bottom windows, Compton's facility, right at the 23 at the border between Delaware and Green County there. D E C is going through, we've gone through several submissions of information. They are now in the process and our expectation is that the D E C will have a full ruling by mid-July is our expectation. We will have a final prayer from them. We have worked with the local town planning board here in Roxbury, but they will not proceed until the determination is made on the secret process. So things are proceeding very nicely and our hope and expectation is that we'll be breaking ground in the fall.
Will the breaking ground be on the Compton property or the one that it was, it was set to purchase adjacent to it?
Yes, so that's, you know, Martin, Martin's property. Majority is going to be on Martin's property, but also as well on Compton property.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dane?
We're very excited. We appreciate all the support that the town and the community has given. As I've said continually, we're looking to be a good neighbor and to support everyone here and make it good. We're going to have lots of visitors to the site. So we're excited about creating a green energy hub up here in Delaware County of the Roxbury. So thank you very much. Any questions, you feel free to ask me now or after the meeting.
Dane, while you're right here, I might add, the Roxbury Planning Board has taken the lead on this project. And they have been involved from the beginning. They will be considered the agency that handles the review of this project.
Yeah, so that D E C is doing the secret review.
D E C is the lead agency for the secret review. However, the Roxbury Planning Board will be a part of the site plan review process.
Absolutely.
And there is no reviewing. The whole thing's in Roxbury.
That's correct. They have said that they'll work behind the scenes with the Roxbury.
That's always going to get the weight squared.
Yes, and that application is going in, I think, today.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They all want to talk.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Mr. Harrington. For those of you on Zoom that don't know, Mike Harrington is one of the lead engineers for Lamont Engineers and L V D development. They manage our water sewer systems in Roxbury. They are overseeing the new project for our upgraded water system, the Roxbury or him or him.
And Greg.
And Greg.
Okay, good evening. Just a couple of quick updates on the Denver Water Project. As I've been reporting the past couple of months, there's been some delays in getting some piping and fittings for the pump house piping replacement work. And that work is being done by Hubble. And unfortunately, it will also delay the completion of the Contract Five controls work by Mike Hinckley. But what we're, I was told today that we're probably within a couple of weeks of getting that the final pieces and parts to put together the piping rework in the pump house.
Now is the winter weather they got in Texas that right that slowed the magic train of these components or is that?
No, no, this, either done the one fitting, just the way. Yeah. I think we got, I know we got an email today from Diane about a restoration question up at Denver, around Denver. And Mark Crisman said that he recalls Dave Cowan of Hubble agreeing to taking care of that. Agreeing to take care of it, yes. So once Hubble's back on site doing this piping work, I'll have Mark look at that and other restoration items up on the site. On the Roxbury Green Gorge Water Project, we had a site meeting with D E P on March 30th. That was kind of the kickoff meeting that would allow work to proceed by Evergreen. Focus of the meeting was basically just reviewing the soil disturbance and stormwater erosion controls that would would happen on the project. Evergreen is slowly getting started administratively. They I think they plan to be to the site by May 1st or so. Just judging by what they said today. There's a chance they're going to get started a little earlier, but it just doesn't look like it's going to happen at this point. Related, Evergreen and Blizzard, the two contracts that exceeded in minority women's business threshold. They're both working on their utilization plan. And I think they're putting the finishing touches on those. Just as a reminder, E F C won't disperse any money on those contracts until those plans get
You're talking to M W B E plans?
What's that?
You're talking to the M W
Yeah, minority women business enterprise utilization plans. Pretty much all contracts, pretty much have to wait for Evergreen to get started. So again, I said, maybe around May 1st will be, you'll start to see some activity at the site there. It's been on the agenda the past couple of times. I have to get with Kevin and Alan to discuss how we're going to procure the propane tanks for the site. That was going to be a town responsibility and
I do have some more information on that though.
You do, okay. I mean, if you have any questions on it now, basically, we're the, we're at about a $10,000 mark and it brings in maybe some procurement questions. So I think that's why we just wanted to make sure we get that straight before we pull the trigger or anything. Let's see here. The last item I had was just the bringing up the issue again about getting some aerial mapping for the project so that we have, when we're ready to roll, we'll have basically the base map for the design work. And in Roxbury, we have the specific replacement that we talked about within the, over the past few months of the lineup to the reservoir. And time is running out in terms of getting the aerial photography done for the mapping. We pretty much need to know tonight if we want to do it. If we don't do the aerial, we can always do ground survey, but experience shows that by the time you get done doing all the ground survey, I guess you spend more than you would.
Explain what design you're talking about, design, the distribution system.
Correct. If you remember a couple of months back, we did some testing on the the transmission main from the Roxbury reservoir down to Route 30 and found it to be in very poor condition. And we were looking at a couple of different replacement routes. And you know, having the aerial mapping gives you a little more flexibility with, with that design and looking at different options. We do have some holdover mapping from the sewer project back in, you know, late 90s or so. But we kind of run out of mapping up there by the reservoir. So that's why you kind of need to supplement it. It can be supplemented with, you know, it's not a lost cause if we don't pull the trigger tonight because we can do it with ground survey, but I just think by the, by the time you're done, you're going to have spent just as much. You know, it may seem like a lot, 12,500 for just that Roxbury piece, but
I guess one of the questions I had, Mike, was what benefit is the, everything's underground, obviously. What's the benefit of the aerial mapping? Is this for base mapping that you can work through your location?
It's what we put our design on.
So you're looking at an aerial mapping so that you can
We haven't had to use it for anything on the project yet because we've been able to work with the old mapping from the sewer project. You know, like in the well fields where we have the building, really nothing's changed there. So we're, you know, the mapping from 20 years ago was probably fine. In up to the reservoir, like I said, we bring it out of detailed mapping. There's this gap at the end where we're, you know, kind of sketching in houses and that sort of thing. And those, you know, we've got to snake a water line through there and something.
And this will give you the accuracy to do what's
Right. I mean, we all know that that line is, has problems that we're at some point going to have to address.
Right. This supports where that's the purpose for this. Kevin, you have any comments on it?
In a piece in Grand Gorge, just so I can explain, again, referring to the map we got with the sewer project where we brought or in sewer and water project where we brought the water vein through part of Grand Gorge, we've got mapping on basically half the handle. What we don't have is Route 23 West. So if in this project, we want to replace water veins, we'll be all set. Okay, so admittedly, the work in Grand Gorge is a little more speculative that we have not forgetting the map in Grand Gorge right now is a little more speculative because we don't actually know we're going to replace something. In Roxbury, we know we've got this section, a pretty important vein that needs to be replaced. So
Anybody on the board have a problem? This again is part of the project.
Absolutely, yes. Or 60% green. Yeah. And, you know, so maybe it's a philosophical question about whether you want to get the mapping in Grand Gorge. When there's nothing being specifically identified. And, you know, we can do that next spring if we wanted to, if we found something that we needed to replace. I'm only pointing out that you can save about $2,000 if you do both of them together.
It's the board's pleasure. Doing this, so.
I think we should do both. Is that what you've got?
At least have the flight and the control. We don't have to actually get the mapping. Base flight on which, yes, I understand what you're saying. Everybody okay with that?
That's the final thing that you need to fill in the blanks.
What's that?
Because you sort of maps now, but you need to get this to get to fill.
Exactly. This is the exactly.
Do we, I don't know, do we need a resolution? Can I have a resolution to accept that?
I'll make the resolution.
One second.
Oh, there.
All in favor? And we're opposed? Very.
Question, is there a storm, the D E P stormwater permit required?
For the well network?
Well, for any of it.
Yeah, we've got better stormwater approval.
D E P, okay. Because we're, even though we're getting a lot of government funding, we're still entitled to 50% reimbursement from C W C.
There really wasn't a lot of stormwater stuff.
Okay, but whatever the total cost was, including your engineering costs and preparing the sweat and stuff. We are entitled to 50% reimbursement.
Okay, I can look back and I think Daniel Green contacted us.
Yeah.
Okay, about that. Would that be through C W C?
C W C, yeah.
Hey, anybody have anything else for Mike?
One last thing.
You have one more.
You mentioned the valve, the valve. You have a little more technical info about the valve.
The failure this weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
What happened was the valve bonnet bolts corroded. That valve was put in around 20 years ago, so less than 20 years ago. At that time, it's the A W W A standard for the valves did not require stainless steel bolts. And this has happened in a couple of other communities. One in Saratoga County has about 50 or 75 of these that the village is replacing. And what kind of the goofy thing is it wasn't all of them. Because it was right at the time the standards was changing. So Round Lake, and again, that project was designed by somebody else. So we weren't necessarily involved with that one, but apparently they, half their valves were good and had the stainless bolts, bonnet bolts, and the others, they just had carbon steel. So just
We know it was one that has the carbon steel bolts.
Absolutely. And so what I did assuming you'd asked the question, I contacted D O H today and found out that replacing those or replacing the valves would be an eligible cost. Again, I don't know if we have any feel right now for how many there are, but even if, even if it's five, it's, you know, it's an effort to dig it up and replace the bolts.
I think it's 20 or 22.
I think that's the number. I'd like to
20, at least. That's in the new
All on the transmission.
Yeah, that's the new transmission.
So yeah, in the case of Round Lake, their D P W staff dug them up and replaced the bolts kind of one at a time. They came up with a system of doing it. And then deeper ones for anybody that were really deep, they hired that out, but then they still did the replacement work. But again, all that late, any, any cost they had was, was eligible to be funded if you consider it. Actually, they did all the ones in pavement. They had it contracted out. They did a lot that were out in the grass.
The water's above the level of the valve.
All right, so, so anyway, is that that's good.
For another game, but we are, we won't make a decision right now. Look at them and see what the game plan is and what what are the resources or whatever stuff we need to do with this project. We need to have a conversation about that.
Yeah. Sorry, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. We have two requests to speak, which I am going to be putting in the discussion from residence section.
We have two requests to speak, which I am going to be putting in the discussion from residence section. For that point. I'd like to start with department reports. Ms. Ellsworth, who is on vacation for a couple of days, has agreed to call in, and so she will be first on the list.
Good evening, everyone from beautiful Lake Placid, New York. I want to start by saying, Kevin Young, thank you for the assignment at nine sixteen this morning on the state budget. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Well done. Um, just a couple of things. The, um, there are two more. Projects in the CDBG. That are. Over budgeted. Um, over the twenty-four five cap, not over budget because of the cost of. Of building materials. And I think anyone out there who's in the building industry knows that the costs have skyrocketed, so I need approval. To go over on one project by two thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and over on another by three thousand four hundred and eighty. This is basically due to the cost of plywood. And of windows. And again, there's money in the, in the budget in this, and we've also met. Actually exceeded our number of households, so I'm hoping I can get approval for that so we can get these jobs done.
So what you're saying though is that it's not additional money that's going to come from the town. We have money. In the project itself.
It's in, it's in the project budget. It's just the town had set a twenty-four five cap. On these income eligible households. And this is the overage by that amount of money each household.
Anybody on the board have an issue with that?
Okay.
Now, I have a problem with. With. Plus.
Got way out of. Have a resolution to accept those overruns? Second. All in favor?
What was the first thing you said?
I, I can't hear you, Macer.
What was the first thing you said?
Uh, one is over two thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. The other is over three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, while I have you on here, we have on the agenda tonight to talk a little bit about sidewalks. I know you've been looking into it a little bit as well. You and I had a conversation about this a while ago. I don't know what you have to add at this point.
I actually have a lot to add. Um, so. It seems to me that. The federal money coming to the town would serve as really a. Great seed money for sidewalks in Grand Gorge and Roxbury. And if you use that as seed money, I noticed that there's a, a. Three hundred and eleven billion dollar infrastructure. Line item in the state budget. Which usually includes transportation enhancement projects, funding through DOT, which is specific to sidewalks. I'm not sure it's going to be in there yet, but it says transportation programs. Um, that always requires a, a local share, so that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would serve as that local share. Um, we do have measurements for Roxbury, thanks to Lucia. I think we can get on the. The GIS website and get the measurements for Grand Gorge where sidewalks are needed and come up with the total project budget and start to look for funding.
Any thoughts on that from anybody on the board?
That's just to, just describe what sidewalks you're talking about. Is it concrete?
I think, Peg, from the conversations you and I've had in the past, um. And we've discussed this many times over the years, but the. The sidewalks would have to go to a concrete type ADA compliant sidewalk, correct?
That's correct. According to DOT, we'd have to get Chipo approval, but I think they'll understand at this point of the game, we tried to replace with slate. Years ago, and we actually had a fifty percent funding in place for the homeowner. But it's at the point where the sidewalks are in such poor shape that we need to just get them in functional condition. Regardless of, of whether it's the homeowner's responsibility or not, it's a community's responsibility to have a good walking, uh, community. That's safe for everyone, not just. The people who live there.
Anybody else on the board? Questions, comments? Anything else, Peg?
Oh, yeah, I got, I have my homework from Kevin. Do you want to hear about the state budget?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, sure.
All right, so aside from the three hundred and eleven billion dollar infrastructure program. There's also a really interesting piece of this, which is a. A affordable broadband, but I had a conversation with Glenn Faulkner and actually the federal program. They're, they're a little perplexed by this, and the federal program may be even more user friendly and efficient for. Uh, income eligible households to get affordable, high speed internet. Um. There's also small business and arts relief funds. Uh, over and above what's available in the American Recovery Plan. On the federal level. And by the way. The, the recovery plan also has. Infrastructure funding in there as well. I know you guys are suffering with some, some issues over in Denver. There's going to be some infrastructure money coming. Available through the competitive grant round. So there's also a middle class property tax credit that maybe Stephanie can speak to in the budget. Um, there's eleven percent increase in school aid. And I think that, well, I know that the New York Main Street Program has been funded. There's a lot of availability. Uh, to funds for affordable housing. And I think that it would behoove us to get together as a community and come up with a plan. Um, to address some of these issues with a funding plan in place. This all doesn't come at once. And anyone who, who knows about the funding agencies, it takes time. So we should prioritize and start to move things along, but that doesn't happen in a day either. So that's pretty much what I, I can offer right now.
Thank you, Peg. But it's like a record breaking, and they, there's opportunities out there. And. We ought to get educated. Somebody needs to educate us and our residents on them so that they can take advantage of.
Okay.
I can't, I didn't, can't hear you, Kevin.
No, I'm just saying, it's like there's so many opportunities out there. Right now, but it's, it's just important to educate the local boards and the residents on what they are.
It's, there is a lot to sift through and some of it is. Is a little bit muddy and we really don't know how that's going to roll out. So I would be hard pressed to do any kind of. Public information sessions until we really see if it's going to roll out in a consolidated funding application. Where this funding is going to be funneled through, what agency, if it's ESD or DEO, uh. Department of State or Department of Transportation or Homes and Community Renewal. I think it's all fresh off the page. The ink is still wet. So we need to see how it's going to roll out in the next year and when.
Okay, anything more for Peg? Peg? Peg, are you ready to go back on vacation or you have more for us?
Uh. I can't believe you guys are letting me off the hook this easy.
Enjoy your vacation, Peg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. Uh, next we have, um, Highway Bill, are you on?
Yes, I'm here, Al.
Okay.
Um, just, uh, sweeping some road, the sands off all the roads, uh, cleaning ditches. Lacing all the culverts, getting all the roads that are on the schedule. Ready for oil and stone. Um. Got an update on the. International truck that we had ordered. It will be in. Albany at the place that they will assemble the body and equipment at the end of this month. Um. Last week, we had, uh. Lost an employee. He left the town of Roxbury Highway Department to go take over his father's business. Um, with that being said, Al, uh, I wanted to ask you and the board if we could, um, how soon we can replace him.
Okay, I believe we have to do a residue, uh, resolution to accept his resignation. We can do that now, um. Going into the time of year where construction is starting, so. The board is acceptable. We would want to probably replace him as soon as possible, I assume, as right though.
Yes, please.
I don't know if you have any line yet. I think you and I talked a couple of days ago.
Couple, I just wanted to hear from you guys before I made any phone calls and got anybody, you know. Excited.
Uh, this is a position that definitely requires a CBL license. He was a truck driver, an equipment operator. So that would be probably the, that would be the highest requisition, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
You know, first up.
Okay. Yeah, Mapper had said, as part of the personnel committee, we're going to obviously sit down and review all of that, you know, as far as who you're considering.
Okay.
So. Yep.
That agrees.
Maybe you get together with that, with Macer and Ed at some point, come up with some, some of the people you're considering for the job.
Okay.
And with that being said, can I have a resolution for the board to accept the resignation of John Dubeck? On the town highways? All in favor? Any opposed? Eric?
Even seeing some towns, like. Losing their home, or an entire highway. But the home for COVID and just never came back.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough thing. We have a good crew and we work hard to keep them built, done a great job of keeping them. Keeping them going and keeping them happy. It's not the best hours and it's certainly not the best working conditions a lot of times. So it's a kind of a tough, tough environment, but. Um, anything else anybody has for Bill? Or do you have any more, Bill? Bill, did you have anything else for us?
Uh, no, I believe that's it.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I believe we got a report from our building inspector this month. No?
We did.
Yeah, we did. Yeah. Anybody have any issues with that? Any questions? Hey. Stephanie, why don't you give us an update on assessment, some, some stuff?
You know, not a lot going on. Um. Um. We're actually getting ready for, we just published, we're getting ready to publish our. Uh, our dates for open hours. I put in my report, which is very recent this month, that we will be holding open hours in, in person this year in town hall. And as always, we will also accommodate anybody that would like to dial in because we have, we do have a lot of second homeowners. So COVID or not. Uh, we've always allowed people to make appointments for open hours, so we'll continue to do that, but. Then we will need to be meeting in person as well as for grievance. We'll be meeting in person for grievance. There will be no Zoom access for it. It's going to be the old fashioned way, in person or by mail. So, and we're, we're happy to resume some semblance of normalcy with that. So. Uh, we're also, and I said this before at the board meetings, but once again, I have to give. Uh, props to our county director, Sharon Felpone, who, um, you know, respects everything at the county level, the services that she provides to towns on time. Uh, so she's getting ready to print tentative files on time, uh, which we all appreciate. So. It's all good.
And I, I just add to that, what Peg mentioned. So part of this budget is a real property, middle class tax subsidy, middle class low. Low income class tax subsidy for property owners. I think it's around two hundred to five hundred. Um.
They're not. Yeah, so the way, the way it's going to work, if you know, we talked about this issue before, if you don't file any income tax return, you'll actually get a check based on some formula. That they haven't fully developed yet. If you do file a return, they'll use your credit to reduce what you owe to the state.
So they're going to take it from the number from the, what you report on the tax return as your real property tax?
Uh, apparently. I'm not sure what the linkage is, but now that, now that taxation and finance has a backdoor into micro property system, which. You know, so they're kind of very connected, so maybe that's how they're going to do it. Not sure, forget it, but. That's the thought process.
Okay, anything else for Stephanie? Everybody? Okay, under building and grounds. Let Kevin give us a. Update on where we're at with the mid rocks buildings. We're on it by Friday, okay? Um, I'm sure there's, I know there's a couple of people on the, on the Zoom who would like to comment during our commentary concerning this purchase, but. As I said, it's something.
Yeah, we're under contract. Yeah, we're done.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I have a chance.
We're committed to moving forward. Um. One thing I, underwater and sewer, Mike, we, we had some letters from people up in Denver Sewer concerning the noise. At the sewer plant. And I know we're looking at some upgrades up there. Is there anything that can be done interim that will maybe control some of that problem? I think it's like.
I assume it's, it's, excuse me, I assume it's the irrigation system blowers that are making the noise.
I, I know we're looking at doing some upgrades, the thing. I don't know if there's anything in the interim.
To retrofit, I mean, yeah, there are enclosures, closures, but you want to spend money on that now.
Well.
Totally different.
I think that the letter also recognized we're doing the upgrades and said, what do include this and that. I think, I think.
So when I've gotten those emails, I've formed them out of mine.
Yeah.
Who's a designer and knows.
And as I said, as part of. This, this federal grant, there is a component of this through, we've been working through. Congressman Novato's office concerning a possible grant. That could be used for that total upgrade of that treatment plant on top of just the filter.
Just like within, just like with generators, they make enclosures for blowers. Right. That are sound attenuating.
Well, fingers crossed, we'll get that project funded completely and be able to do more than we hope to, just. Filters, micro, go, go, breaks. Um. Planning board, did we have anything there? Anything from the planning board? I don't think we have any.
I, excuse me, I had, uh. Scouts. And having a family, baby. And. And he's also would like to trim the vines. On the tents over there. And, uh, paint the wall. White today.
Okay.
There's a. Well, you should, the buying and stuff, they got a project here, just a. My buddy, no, she's family with that. Probably would do both. It's getting overgrown.
Okay, and that, I know you and I talked on last meeting about. Some things that need to be done to this building. Changes for the front of it. You know, the side problems. Um, we're okay with looking at this cost contracts to hold with some of that stuff? Estimates.
Um, excuse me, could you, could you speak up? It's really difficult to hear.
Wow.
Can you say that again?
I'm just saying that with all this money that's available. Maybe something with. Would help.
So we got. Now, why don't you try to get the county?
Alan?
Yes.
We, we can't hear at all.
Uh, hold on just a second, folks. I'm going to see if I can switch. My audio to the other microphone.
Is, is the audio better?
That is actually going to be a Eagle Scout project?
I don't think Eagle.
Alan, I'm sorry. What is the topic? We can't. For some reason, we can't hear.
I just changed the microphone back. I was hoping maybe it would pick up the board a little bit better. Can anybody hear us better?
We could hear.
You just have to speak up here. I'll turn that a little bit, maybe that'll help. Yeah, I'm just doing it off the camera, but some. I've got it about as high as I can get it, so.
So Ed, why don't you just say, say it again?
The Boy Scouts, they're going to have their final derby. And they also want to. Of the school.
I said, I switched it back to my laptop, hoping that would be better.
Going up on the fence.
We're getting some free labor.
Did you say the Boy Scouts were painting the building and cleaning up, right?
It's painting, no, it's painting the wall.
Sorry, guys, what Ed is talking about is, is they're doing a pine derby race here. If you couldn't hear him real, and they're going to be cleaning up and cleaning the area where they're doing the race. Okay, anything more on that? Okay.
So maybe it'll help when someone has to speak, remove the door muzzle. Kind of getting muffled, you know? Is wearing masks, masks work. One person takes a mask off, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah, it's, it is a problem. I realize that. For our short term rental committee, I, I will say. Deanna is out sick tonight. She was not able to be here or be on Zoom. She is the one that's the secretary that's been handling most of the notes for the meetings. I believe Mac or your committee had one meeting, is that correct?
No, we've had a couple of them.
You've had a couple of meetings since the last meeting? Since the last meeting?
We had one since last meeting.
Okay, anything you want to report briefly about where we're at?
Briefly, things are getting worked out. We still have some issues and bugs and we have a great committee going on. We have a great committee going on and as I said, there's a couple more issues. Working things out. We're trying to keep things really simple and easy. But as I said, without Deanna here with some minutes. And some input.
And I believe you're, you're not at this point ready to submit any kind of a draft ordinance or anything for general public review?
Not really.
So.
Probably not until next month.
Okay.
Are we allowed to speak or? They're muting me.
No, we are, we are going to have a discussion from residents after the end of our business meeting. And then at that point, I will open the floor. Jessica, who is managing our Zoom meeting, will allow people to speak as they come in on the chat session if they would like to say something. And we will take all comments at that point as I put on the, on the agenda and also on the response. To the Zoom meeting, when, when I send everybody the response. What's that? Yes, Denise, I'm sorry. I didn't forget you. Yeah. Okay.
So that's starting tomorrow.
Okay. No, I did see your report. Looks like you're starting to get quite a lot of interest in the park and it looks like you're getting a lot of your dates filled up. So that's good. Good, good. And I see that we do have now some signs in there about picking up after your dog and some. Bag dispensers and some of that. I know that's been an issue with people walking in the park with dogs.
That's great.
So. And, and I will add, I, I've had some conversations with the soil and water conservation from the county. They are still planning, hoping to be able to do the water work repair. To try to control some of the water that's getting out on the fields. That's, that's been a problem all. Yeah, that's, it's being managed through the soil and water conservation. A macro, you've been involved with that as well. But I did speak with Bend dates from soil and water conservation a couple of weeks ago. He said they are working on trying to get that project started back up. That got put on hold, hold in the summer because we were, we were scheduled to do it all last, at the end of the summer last year. And it got put on hold because of the state budget issues. They are back on track and I believe they have the funding in place now. So they're trying to get the stream permits they need and things like that to get that going again. So.
Alan? I'm back.
Okay. Yes.
Did you get a timeline? Because they need to be in that river between June and August.
Yes, they're aware of that.
So we, all right. Have you talked to Grayden at all?
I talked with Bend dates a couple of days ago, or about a week ago, I said.
Okay.
When they say. Hey, when they slated that, they're, they're only talking about maybe most of maybe four days working there.
Yeah, it's, it's not a lot of time, not a lot of work.
Yeah, but it's, it's been about six years.
Yeah, we know.
Just saying, so if we don't push and push hard, we're going to be put off another season and it's getting worse. The scouring has gotten really bad. You know, you guys know what it looks that like out there. It's, it's just a mess.
It's an issue. We're aware of that.
And it all has to go through, it has to go through DEPs.
No, actually it just has to go through DEC. DEP does not have jurisdiction in this project.
It's just the stream permits through the DEC to do that work.
Also the funding. So it all goes through the FLA. So it's all kinds of crap.
Actually, this was not part of the flood mitigation. This, this was. This was done way before that. It was in the hopper way before that flood mitigation plan came into place.
You're right, Peg, but the guys, it got thrown into the mix with that. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, just a couple of items we need to go through. Peg, you just, you talked about the state budget impact. Kevin, did you have anything to add on that? No, okay.
Our priority would be money that you're talking about, federal and state money. The relief funding and all that. A lot of it is tied with deadlines against the projected projects, at least I know on a school level it is. So I think it would be really important for us to look into that.
Yeah, so I, I was just going to say, maybe Alan could ask Delaware County.
Yeah.
To sort of do a summary because yeah, because that Delgado one, I think April 15.
Right.
We have to get something that's, you know, right away.
Well, that Delgado, that Delgado money is a whole separate ball of wax.
No, I'm just saying that all these things are going to have deadlines and.
Right, I know like the federal money that's still, it's getting paid out over three or four years. Some of it gets paid over two years. But there are deadlines for, you know, proposal as to what we.
Correct.
So.
Correct. And some of them are reimbursement programs. So the town has to be prepared for that as well.
Well, I agree. I, I think we need to get together as, as a board or as a group and try to figure out what's going to benefit us and what we're going to be able to use it as we discussed before, Peg. I think there's a lot of options there, but I also think there's an awful lot of questions on how it's all going to be. Yeah. Put together and who's going to manage what, as, as you said earlier. So I, I think we're a little premature on a lot of that.
Yeah, just that, you know, these wealthier communities that, teams of people that track all that and they then get it, you know, and poorer communities. Need, need to get the information.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, another thing we have on our plate, we talked about last month, the Roxbury Rotary has asked us. As a board, if we would be willing to take over the responsibility for the. Street signs and some of the other things that are being done. On, for the Christmas decoration stuff. You're good at it. So is, is the board okay with taking that responsibility and maybe working with one of the Roxbury groups to help us with that, to put, put those decorations out at Christmas time? For you, you folks that are on Zoom that are not familiar, the Roxbury Rotary for years has been responsible for handling. The, the Christmas decorations that go up on the telephone poles every year, both in Roxbury and Grand Gorge. The beautification committee in Grand Gorge has been doing that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the community action.
And, and you continue, you will continue to do that. It's the Roxbury, the Rotary is, they don't have the. They help to manage it anymore and they've asked that the town step in and take some of that over. So is the board okay with that?
We looking for someone to take it over then?
Well, that, that's a possibility as well, but may kind of run it through the town, get it off the Rotary's back, I guess is the best way to put it. Is that correct? Diane, I know you're a Rotary number. Is that correct to what the Rotary is looking for?
I think they, they're just done with it.
To the town. Yeah.
So, sorry, I'm jumping in again. So it's not just the Christmas decorations. It's, it's also the, the tree in the square for Christmas. It's also the American flags on the higher post. The Legion does the lower post. And I think there's conversations about some welcome flags.
We have not put flags on the poles in quite some time.
Okay, but, but you put the holders on the poles. Years ago.
The Legion, I believe, has been responsible for putting the flags out for like Memorial Day and.
They put them on the street.
Right, on the street.
We do not have any of, we have not used the flags up on the poles.
Did you hear that, Peg?
I did, but regardless, there's two sets of flag hole, pole holders on each light post. One was the Legions and the Legion continues to put out the American flags. The ones higher up were done by the Rotary. Years ago, they, although they've not put the flags up. And there is some conversation through Friends of Roxbury about getting some welcome flags. So. You know, this conversation needs to be more robust. It doesn't need to happen tonight. But yeah, I, I think it's, it's bigger and broader than, than just some reads up at Christmas.
Is board okay with that? If the Friends of Roxbury group was interested in getting involved with that, we would be very happy and very supportive of that.
No comment, Peg?
Oh yeah, plenty of comments, but it's getting late. I would hope that the flip side of that is that the town would be supportive of what the Friends of Roxbury are trying to do and loan a hand now and again as well.
I, I think we're all on the same page and I think it's something to move on to another night, but I think we would definitely all be willing to work together and figure out what's the best way to make it work.
Okay, great.
So. Um, next we had, we discussed a couple of months ago, we've had some comments and concerns about the speed limits in Meker Hollow Road. I have still talking with the, the county to try to find out. What, if, if any changes were made to that and I, from what I can understand, there were not. But I, I'm still trying to confirm that. So there's really nothing to report there. We have on our old business here, charges for the park pavilion. I think you're, you're pretty much set with your fees for this year. Nothing's going to change, correct? Okay. And Kevin, you gave us an update on the mid rocks closing. Kevin, did you want to discuss just for the board? This water? No. Rather not. Okay, that's fine. That should be another thing. And I'm not sure about the solar permit. I know we spoke with it last month with the board, maybe even decisions on which way they'd like to go with that. I think that's still on the table. We haven't really decided what we want to do with that. Okay, we, the board did. We did receive a couple of letters from the board. They've been transferred to the board. We did discuss the sewer noise one. At this point, I would like to. Move our meeting into a discussion from residents. Jessica Vasion, who is managing our Zoom meeting today, will be letting people in to speak and make comments to the board. I'm just going to read a brief thing from our minutes that I believe everybody has seen, but. The part of our meeting set aside for public comments. During this time, members of the community have the opportunity to comment to the board on letters, matters of interest. Comments will be given a civil manner and will be reasonable duration and will respect the privacy of all individuals. Specific questions will be addressed. Through the appropriate employee and will respond as we can or as they can with the information. Any questions to the board will be reviewed by the board and we will. Include them in future meetings for discussion. With that being said, Jessica, if you would like to open the Zoom meeting up. For discussion, the board will take into account and make notes.
Okay, I, I have four people so far on the list. If you would like to speak. Just type in the chat. I would like to speak and I will answer you privately that I got your message. So our first speaker is Lucia and I am going to Lucia, I'm going to unmute you now. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. So in regard to SDR, in the meetings that were held, what were the discussions? That's for Mac or.
Most of this. Most, to answer your question briefly, is most of the discussions were how we're going to. Regulate and register SDRs. And the other part of it is just. How to make SDRs safe for both. The renters and renters. I wish I had my minutes, but Deanna has them and I don't have that in front of me. I'm going by. Just basically what we've talked about in the last two meetings. We've had two meetings on these. Our biggest game plan is to keep everything very simple. You know, nothing. Not 10 pages of regulations, not laws and stuff like that is, we're just trying to keep it simple. Okay?
Okay, the, I've asked for the minutes and I was told. That there was no minutes.
The minutes are between the committee to keep our. Ideas. During the minutes for ourselves. And once we come out with. Total game plan, then everybody will have a chance to comment on to and give their opinions.
So no minutes will be made public and then you'll go to the town and then how long do we have? To review your regulations? Will it be several meetings or? What are you, what is your plan?
Well, if the town's going to adopt a law.
Kevin, maybe you can give Lucia and everybody else on there, the process and the procedure that's required to develop a local law. This is not something that happens in five minutes, as I've said several times on meetings.
No, I, I get that and, and. I don't need to be spoken down to, but. Minutes and I've been denied minutes and I'm just representing about 50 people and I just want to know what is the next step? If we could get any information, because we fear that, and I've said this, that we need to know, you know. That we need to know, you know. Do we have to have some time to review and have our feedback as well?
You're definitely gonna have time to review. Once we come out with an outline. That we think is suitable for everybody. I think, I think there's no. Everybody in SDR is fearing this. It's nothing to be feared of. It really isn't. It's not gonna be, as I said. Five, ten pages of laws, rules and regulations. We're keeping this very, very simple, okay?
Mac, I think the fear is that we don't know what's going on. That's the fear.
Well, you'll find out pretty soon because I think we're gonna have probably one more minute, one more minute. One more meeting probably next month, we will come forward with some kind of an outline that people can, you know, then pick apart, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You could, we could do this. Kevin, you have that outline. You can present it to the board. And the board can then, if they want, next month solicit comments from people or. Make it available and solicit comments. And then when when the board has enough information to say they wanna proceed with a local law. Then, you know, I'll take those comments and put it into a form of a local law. And then there will schedule, the board has to schedule a public hearing again where everyone can provide comments. And that public hearing, you can also provide written comments too.
Lucia, this is gonna be.
And then.
Months.
And then after the public hearing. Um, the board can adopt the local law or it can amend the amend it and do another public hearing, so. So there's a, there'll be a, I say, if you get this out next month, we can, the next month being May. We could probably schedule public. Like, I'm gonna call it more of an informal public hearing in June. You know, and then maybe by July, I will have presented to you the board a local law in local law form.
Right.
That you can consider. And that, so that will be, then there'll be another opportunity in all this.
So won't it, so. I spoke to Alan a couple of weeks ago. He said it might not even be. Up for discussion till the end of the summer. But it seems like sooner, do you think?
Well, if if Macar is saying that they will have an outline of what they're recommending to the board by next meeting. You know, then we'll have an outline of what they're recommending to the board by next meeting. And and it's a question of then making available to the public some comment and then turning it into a. The form of a local law and then starting that process.
Absolutely. I don't know if we have any other members of that committee.
Esther, I think she wants to speak.
Yeah, let Esther speak.
Again, we're not, we're we're not on a timeline to do this. Um, we're not trying to fault it on anybody. As as we've discussed in previous meetings, this is not something that we are looking to deter. Short-term rentals for and we are looking to the short-term rental community to provide comments. However, in in the action of developing an ordinance, we have to work with a committee that can function. If I had thirty people on there, nobody would be able to function and we would get nothing done. So that's the purpose for the committee. Esther, if you have something to say, I'd be glad to have you add to it since we're on that subject.
Sure, I can, I didn't ask to speak, but if people want me to speak, I can speak. I think what Macar said is. Correct. Um, we've just been going over the drafts and. I think we're, we'll be ready by next month to have something presented to the public. And then everybody can have their feedback. Um, it's gonna be very simple. There's nothing, like Macar said, complicated or lengthy. Um, so yeah, I don't see why we wouldn't have something for everybody to comment on by next month.
Thank you, Esther.
So, uh, it's Peg again, sorry. I know vacation is fun, but.
Nobody muted her.
Stuff.
I thought you were on vacation.
Well, no, I am. This is how I spend my vacation. Thanks. So just just rolling back to when we developed the preservation ordinance. We came up with a timeline. And Macar may behoove the committee to come up with a clear and concise timeline, like by June, we will have this. And if that's not reasonable, say by July, we will have this. Come up with a timeline and then put it on Kevin's lap like he gave me homework. And, uh, and say, okay, we're gonna have something that we want you to draft, develop a draft. Law for, local law and just come up with a timeline so people know when they. They can reasonably expect to be able to view this and comment on it. I think a lot of this has been rolling in this abyss. We did a lot of public input. Um, sessions when we did the preservation ordinance. And if you all remember, it took two and a half, three years to get it out.
Well, I think we have a timeline.
Yeah, we just had a timeline.
Loose to me, that's all.
Okay, we have a timeline and the goal is the two members of the committee thought that they would have the outline by next month. And we could start getting some public feedback on the outline. And then when, you know, at some point, based on the public feedback and the outline. The board is gonna give some direction as to how they wanna go. And then when they give that direction, I draft it up and then we start the process. So, you know. If we do, you know, once you get the outline though, we have the tools that we need to proceed. So it's just a question of the political will to go forward. And I know everybody's so. So up in arms about this, but you know, all that is what's, every community that I'm aware of. Is having the same issue. With the short-term rentals and it's if you go Wyndham, you go Hunter, you go. I got a town call today from Lexington. I think they just adopted the law. So everybody's having this issue and it's, and it's just trying to balance. The people who are here full-time with people who are renting out to short-term rentals. And the impact of those short-term rentals on the quality of life for the people who are here full-time. So we're just trying to to balance, balance that, you know. Um, and it doesn't, as Macar said, it doesn't take a lot of pages. It takes maybe a registration. It takes maybe a person who's who's not. And was naps and tea to have some local person as a property manager who can respond to problems and things like that. So those are the types of things that they're looking at. Um, but you know, short-term rentals are also good for the community. They bring people into the community. They help maintain the the infrastructure of the community and the, uh, and the housing of the community, so. Um, it's just gonna, you know, it'll it'll come out, but it'll be a fair process.
The next person to speak is Robin. Robin, you can unmute yourself now.
Hi, thank you. I apologize. I'm having trouble with my video, so it's a blank screen unfortunately. Um, I wanted to talk about the purchase of the Midrocks building. I understand that you said that. You're going forward. Have we closed on this yet?
Um, we have, we have signed the closing documents. Um, tomorrow I'll deliver the checks and then when everything's in order. Um, I'll get a copy of the deed and we'll, the will be filed, so the paperwork is done and and it'll close this week.
Okay, so can you help us understand? Um, I'm concerned and I know a lot of other people are that this went forward. Um, in a way that was not quite as transparent as we would like to see. A lot of residents feel like they did not know about this plan, did not see a plan. I still have some questions, um, some around financing. Um, I don't, can you clarify? I know that we are borrowing funds at this point. But I'm assuming that there'll be a bond at some point. Will that be voted on or will that just be? Done? And also, how will that affect our taxes?
Okay, so, so to start with this, is that the town board for almost the past twenty years. Has had the need to upgrade its its town hall that's been inadequate. And the what they've looked at how to do that with new construction. They looked at how to do that with renovating this building that we're in today. Um, and because of things like prevailing wage and N W B E and all the different requirements. That one has to do when one's a public entity, the costs were always prohibited. This particular building, um, became available. Uh, when the person who was currently using it no longer needed it. And it became an opportunity for the town to get five thousand square feet of space. Um, for five hundred thousand dollars on on seven point two acres or something like that. So it became from a, from a, from, if you had to replace a town hall, it became an opportunity of the century, really. It was, it was, it's just something that came up. It's not, and if we town didn't take it, someone, maybe nobody would have taken it, but. But from the town's perspective, this worked and was an opportunity. Um, so the town, you know, and this started back when Tom, you know, Tom Hines was supervisor. And, you know, Tom brought it back to the board, the board was supportive. So we've been working on it for about a year and a half. And we've had public hearings. We had a, we passed a bond resolution which was sub published, which was subject to a public hearing. And then was also subject to what they call permissive referendum and nobody filed a referendum. So all, all of this was. Done out in the open at public meetings. Um, and we've conducted, you know, environmental surveys, we've conducted building inspection surveys, we've conducted. All these different types of inspections and the like. And the building is, it's a good building. It's in great shape and it and it comes with the office equipment. You know, that we would otherwise have to replace and so. Um, it's just a good deal and and at the five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, dollars, I think what the town has, the town has a bond on the highway department. Or is that right?
That's correct.
The highway garage that is about to end in the next year or two. And this bond, what we're doing is we're getting a, what they call a bond anticipatory note. For for two years to fund the the purchase. Um, and that is at less than one percent interest. At the end of the two years, then we'd probably go to a, a long-term bond that I'm gonna say would be a ten-year bond. And, you know, and so I imagine if you, if you go for a ten-year bond at six hundred thousand at three percent, you're. You're gonna have seventy or eighty thousand dollars a year. Uh, debt payments that have to be paid. Um, and that's not really gonna have any impact on taxpayers.
Okay, so, um, so you're saying it's, it's, you're basically kind of rolling the the bond that you have. You're just going to continue it as opposed to it stopping. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, so one of the things that Peg talked about tonight was. Um, talking about the community involvement and outreach. And honestly, um, although I'm sure that you, um, held to the letter of the law. The spirit of the law, I think, was not, um, because there was no. Um, there was not much attempt to let the public speak, get ideas. Um, and feedback and actually we're seeing the same thing with the, um. Uh, with the, uh, short-term, uh, residents. Because people are saying that they want to be involved. They want to understand what's going on. Um, before it's, it's given to us as a kind of fait accompli. Um, so I would really like to urge and that the town council. To open up their process a little bit and, um, have people be able to respond and react. Before you're done with your law.
And we'll do that.
The other thing is we have not heard any kind of plan about, um, what we're doing with the, uh, with the old town hall. And how that will be financed.
Is Peg still on?
I, I.
Yes, I am.
I I think I can, I can address part of that. Um, the, the current town hall that we have, um, at this point, we have no plans to to sell it. Maybe at some point in the future, if we determine that the town has no, no longer a need for it, that may be a possibility. However, it is another building. It's a meeting space. Um, the biggest problem with it, as we've discussed before, is there is no parking there at all. Makes it very difficult, especially during the day because the school is in session in their parking lot. So we, we have the ability to use the building for other uses, a smaller meeting space if needed. We also have a lot of historical stuff that we've saved over the years that we would like to find a home for. Where it can be protected and put out to be displayed. Um, that's one of the thoughts we've had on this. There is, from what I understand, some money available for historic preservation of documents and things like that. There is also a vault there, which we have as a town greatly outgrown. But for that kind of a use, it would certainly be something else that could be used for the building. It also makes extra space for possible community functions and different things like with that.
Coming up with a plan that you'll present in terms of 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 this and cost, everything just seems a little. Um. Not planned out and so if if you're, if you're going to do this, can we? Can, can you put it in writing and can we see what the plan is, what the cost of renovations will be and how it will affect Main Street?
Uh, that, that'll be done, but we did publish on the website. You know, a bunch of, a bunch of these, a bunch of responses to the questions, all of which kind of addressed. These issues with as much detail as we currently ourselves know, so.
Can I?
Whatever.
Jump in?
Yeah.
Sorry, Kevin, but this is a great opportunity for people who care about Main Street Roxbury to participate in a conversation. About the future use of that building. And when you speak to the potential for archival material for historical purposes. And, um, exhibit space and additional small meeting space and renovation of the facade, which is not. Very, um, appealing right now. I can say that, um. In my experience, town halls are the hardest funding to come by. Nobody funds a town hall. But there is funding for museums and archival material and things like that, but this can be a broader discussion and all-inclusive. This is a great opportunity to to get some input.
I, I just, I just wanna say one thing, which is. Some people get confused about, I come from Albany, you know. In Albany County, we have thirty-seven county legislators, each making thirty-some-odd thousand dollars with full health insurance. In Roxbury, we have five town board members. I think each make two thousand dollars or something. We don't, we have a five thousand dollars, okay. We have a town clerk. I I don't wanna tell you what she makes. So we don't have a, we, you know, we don't have an infrastructure to do a lot of paperwork, to do a lot of. Stuff, nobody, they, board members don't get health insurance. This is not, this is, this is not a situation where people come to be a. Town board member to get benefits. They, they come to be a town board member to serve and. Um, and so we're transparent as we can be, but we're just not, we're not, we don't have the infrastructure. To publish a lot and and do a lot of process or to, uh. Be fancy. We don't, you know, this, up until now, we haven't had a speakerphone.
This is new technology.
So I just, we gotta, we, we do the best we can with the little resources we have and we try to keep it little so that the taxes are are small.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to, um, Andrea. Andrea, you are under Jonathan Leader. I've just asked you to unmute.
Yes, hi, good evening. So earlier, um, you mentioned speeding on Meeker Hollow. I live on, um, State Highway Thirty, five, four, one, five, five. And I have a huge problem with the speeding coming. I am just at the beginning of going to thirty miles per hour from a fifty-five. And I have a huge concern about the speeding on this, uh, area here in our town. We have trucks coming through, we have cars coming through at fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. And I'm just wondering if you guys have considered doing something about that.
I I think the easiest way to address that is, yes, we have. And actually, be- before I was elected, that's one thing that I've brought up pretty much in every meeting in my last eighteen years, um every budget meeting about we definitely need to do something with speed control signs. We have also, over the years, talked with the state police and they're doing a better job of helping the police along with our constable Steve Williamson. But yes, I totally agree that that is an avenue to pursue some kind of a your speed is signs like many other communities are using. We are researching that. Um I don't have any numbers at this point. Um obviously, there's a cost for that. I'm not sure about about grants. I understand there are some safety grants that can possibly be used for that. And we are looking into that, but I totally and a hundred percent agree that it's a major issue, especially with our school being in the middle of of the Main Street. And it does need to be addressed. I I a hundred percent agree with that.
Okay, the next person, Roxbury Arts. Uh I will unmute.
And so I'm actually just speaking as a regular resident, as Jenny. Um so I actually had two comments slash questions. Uh earlier in the meeting, uh Peg had brought up an idea uh to help fund um the repair of sidewalks on Main Street. Um and perhaps because of the muted uh or mic issues, I couldn't gauge the reaction from the board members. I know that this has been a ongoing issue for as long as I lived in Roxbury. I understand that it has been an ongoing discussion and issue far longer than that. And so um it can the board members uh perhaps address the um their commitment to uh to addressing the sidewalk issues, you know, within the, you know, immediate future.
Are you on the board? Like to comment on that? I've been doing all the talk from here. Thanks for the help. This is a support I give from my board. Um what I what I will say, Jenny, is is um we we need to do something with the sidewalks. We're all aware of it. As as we've had discussions before, one of the issues is that Roxbury is not an incorporated village and neither is Grand Gorge, which means they cannot develop a a budgetary arrangement for doing things within just the village. Problem becomes the only way you can effectively do anything with sidewalks is the cost has to go under a private or under a sidewalk district, much like a lighting district in the communities, both Roxbury and Grand Gorge, which means that any improvements that are made, short of getting a grant, have to be funded through the people that live in those sidewalk districts and not the rest of the town. Am I correct, Kevin?
That's correct.
So we've looked at this for many years. We've tried, as as Peg mentioned earlier, we've tried to figure out some ways to deal with it. Um the cost for sidewalks in in even one hamlet is 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 very, very expensive. Um it's my opinion that whatever we do in Roxbury also needs to be done in Grand Gorge. They have many people that walk on Main Streets here as well. So it's got to be looked at as a whole project. And the the biggest problem with this, again, is the cost. And and it also comes down to the cost of maintenance for sidewalks. Again, any maintenance that we do on the sidewalks would have to be borne by the sidewalk district, which would be made up from the people that own property and have a sidewalk in front of their house. Again, that's that's a big nut for not a lot of residents when you look at the amount of people that live in each village. And many of them are senior citizens. Many of them are people that are of lower income levels. It becomes a huge burden and a huge expense for them to be saddled with this. So with that all being said, we are working as best we can to try to come up with some avenues to fund some of this kind of thing, so it doesn't have to go back on the backs of the taxpayers. Um what Peg mentioned and talked about earlier is in our new state budget this year and with the relief from COVID, there may be some avenues coming very soon that would would help alleviate some of these problems.
Hmm. So is there somebody, is there a committee that's in charge of this as part of um town improvement or anything along those lines? Or is it just a full board?
Well, at this point, we don't have enough information on what's going to be available and when it's going to be available. I think once we know that, I think that's exactly the direction we would go, is probably form some kind of a committee to look into what can be done and how it can be managed, so that we won't
So
to deal with it every night at a board meeting. It's much easier to do it at a committee level and and the board will react to it as we get it together. But there is I I want, I don't want to be hopeful and say that there's light at the end of the tunnel, but it does look like there's some possibilities coming that may make this something that we can work with. So I guess that's the best way to put it at this point.
Okay. I had another question. No, I'm sorry. I'm not done. I have another question about the um water uh leak and uh the communication about this. So um I understand that the water uh leak started on Saturday and that there was a communication that was posted to the town website on Sunday about the boil water. Um I had wondered if perhaps um you all thought that this was the best form of communication? Or did you think that this could be improved to make sure that all town members knew about like boil water advisories? Uh because, you know, not many people are checking the town website all the time.
It's it it was an issue, especially because it happened to be on a weekend and it was very difficult to get the word out. We did uh we did also contact the radio station. They did put it out on Saturday and and were able to get some messages out Saturday afternoon about it. Um again, we we did get it on the website. We we don't right now have a Facebook page or anything like that for the town. We we kind of did our best to get it out as as best we can. I am also looking into a possibility of using our county's nine one one system um for notification purposes. I believe they have some kind of a system or may be able to develop a system where these kind of notifications can happen much quicker, similar to what the school has.
They're going cell phone, I think.
Yeah, it's a it's a uh what they call reverse nine one one. And I only just heard about it over this weekend through this event. So we're looking into that as well. But I agree that we we need to figure out a better way to communicate with people. So
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Alan. Um Alan, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi. I'm Alan. Um I'm Judith, using my husband's. So I think the communication issues really get down to kind of a core issue that came up with the town hall purchase and also this water, this mainline water issue and and moving forward, sort of budgetary decisions, other decisions um about major expenditures by the town and whether it's sidewalks or streetlights or garbage cans. And I really feel, I hope, that we that the town can see that some of the methods of communicating this information are not really reaching the residents and taxpayers. And I understand that you have limited budgets, but Facebook is not an expenditure. You have a community group that is trying to disseminate information into the community. Maybe just having a conduit between town hall and the the people that get that out into the community might be useful.
Again, as I said, we we're doing the best we can here right now. The Roxbury, the town of Roxbury does not have a Facebook page. Kevin, I understand before you run off. Um we we are looking at, we did, we did receive a grant a while ago to upgrade our website and possibly as part of that upgrade. We are looking into trying to do something as a community Facebook page.
And I just want to say the town clerk sent out six hundred mail notices today on that. So today is Monday.
Yeah.
And they
On Sunday. And I should say, our our clerk was in the office all day on Sunday, sending sending out notices and calling businesses and calling as many residents as we could do that. While we were busy trying to figure out where the leak was, she was already in the process of doing that. And uh it it's very important that sometimes the face to face thing is the best thing we can do. And I I do have to uh publicly thank Diane for all of her help on Sunday and on Saturday, actually. But um
Good night.
It's old school. I understand that, but sometimes it's the best we can do.
Can I jump in for a second? So, you know, it seems to me that no matter how you communicate, there's going to be somebody who's going to be lost in translation. So whether it's Facebook, there's going to be people who don't check Facebook, people who don't listen to the radio. You know, what we have to do is at a community, be proactive and call our neighbors. Diane did a great job. I saw I had muddy water and I was really hesitant to do anything. I knew something was wrong. So so let's all try and be a little more proactive and help in the communication rather than expect it to be um delivered in our laps. So um I think a Facebook page is a great idea. I think Diane did a fabulous job. I think it was quite clear that um the staff, the town supervisor and the clerk were working all weekend along with the water people. But let's let's do our best to communicate with each other. I I think that's the way our small, wonderful community works.
Okay, our next speaker is Renee. Uh Renee, you can unmute now.
Thank you. Uh yes, um our family has owned our home for fifty years. Um and it used to be a a farm. And um we even named the road after George Squire, who had one of the first farms there. And when we listen to Steve Williamson, people talking about Steve Williamson, they said that he knows all his neighbors. And that's how he helps protect us. And there's a lot of people that are long term residents that I have spoken to that are very concerned um about STRs and the fact that they didn't even know that there was something going on about it. And so as Robin and several people said this evening, I may have a possible answer to make it um more fair and more transparent for everyone. Uh Shan Daken is one example of a place that has just done this. And what I'm talking about is to do a survey, send out a survey to every resident um that has a home in Roxbury. And there should, in my opinion, and I um gave a handout today for everybody on the council. And basically, it's two separate pieces to the survey. One piece could be for people who own their own homes. And the other piece is for people who do STRs. And one of the things that could come out from this is the number of STRs and the location. And the importance of the location, for example, the number and the location is, you wouldn't want a like eight STRs on one block on Main Street. Um so it would give us more information and an idea. It would also, just to give you an example, three of my closest neighbors now are STRs. And if I was looking to buy my house now, I wouldn't buy it because I wouldn't want three STRs. I don't know my neighbors. So um I think by sending out a survey, and the survey can include things like um do you have any problems? Uh do you have any ideas of, for example, fees of funding for police, fire, garbage? Because it it does cost money. And I'll give you an example. Middletown has come up with something, and I'm not suggesting we should do the same thing. Middletown uh gives out a permit for five hundred dollars for anyone who is not a Middletown resident. And they couldn't believe it. They thought that would deter people. But next year, they're going to raise the price because everyone's buying one. Um and in terms of police, STRs use police, whether they realize it or not. Over a year ago, maybe two years ago, our town count or or town constable had to find um three young men um at the Ferris Hill Farm um got impaired. They were drunk or stoned. And um one got lost. And the police looked for three days. And Steve Williamson was the one who found the young man dead of hypothermia um after partying. Um so I think that everyone would feel much better if they could, everyone could have knowledge and input. And um that could solve all the problems. Then you would have something to go through and say, well, these these are the suggestions. These are the problems. And this way, everyone would feel like they were involved in the decision. Thank you very much.
Okay, um our last speaker is Greg. I'm going to uh unmute you now.
I think I'm unmuted.
Oh, good. Okay. Go right ahead.
First of all, I want to thank the board for their work. I understand um I I understand a little bit of your pain, uh simply because I'm on the board at Roxbury Run Village and people talk to us like we're paid uh, we're we're full time uh workers for them. And and I I can certainly understand some of the consternation that uh you go through. And I appreciate you staying late. I'm sure that's not your favorite thing to do on a on a Tuesday. Um but I um I did have a couple of questions about the Mid Rocks uh purchase. And I we, I know you sent out a letter uh and responded to an email that I had sent in and said the tax revenue from the building was around five thousand dollars. Uh so we're going to obviously lose that. And then we'll have the expense of maintaining the property and and so on. So uh it's costing the town at uh at least five thousand, six thousand, whatever it is uh a year to 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 maintain it, uh which was something that obviously we never had in the past. Uh and I really question whether uh maybe the direction, in my opinion, uh the board should be taking is rather than buying a building at a great price uh and spending six hundred thousand dollars, even though interest rates are low, why aren't we fighting to find a business to take that space over and continue to to provide jobs and continue to pay taxes to us? And we can still spend six hundred thousand dollars and build a custom made building to exactly what we want. Uh I I just felt like the response I got from my email was late in March. I've been traveling. I literally just got back today. Uh and that and now we've had this meeting, rather than be, and now you're closing. So I I'm I really, I I'm just not getting the sense that the board is that concerned about what we have to say or or what our concerns are. I would rather see uh the board focus on bringing a business in to 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 fill that void and figure out another way to to build out our town hall, which obviously needs uh obviously much more than renovation.
Alan, unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. I didn't realize we were muted. Um as as I said, we as a board have been working on this, as we talked about earlier, for many, many years. And every time we've dealt with this problem, um knowing that we needed to do something with different with the town hall, the numbers that we came up with based on the numbers that we came up with based on cost for construction for a new building or even renovations of an existing town building, of which we did look at a couple of options there. We had an old town highway garage that had some possibilities. We also had the building that we're in tonight that had some possibilities, which is the Grand Gorge Civic Center. However, in looking at the costs required and the fact that as a municipality, we're under the auspices of prevailing wage for everything that we do, the cost to even come close to doing what's available to us in the purchase of this building was astronomically higher than what we could as a community have ever sought to gain by trying to develop our own building or redevelop one of our existing properties and turn it into a town hall, even those possibilities were much, much higher in cost and would far outweigh the loss in tax revenues for this building. I guess that's the thought process that we've had as a board every time we've considered this. And again, the reason this took so long is there was never really an opportunity or a building available or money available to do this properly. And this project came along and as a board, we all agreed. And Tom Hines, who passed away last year, had started this when he was town supervisor. And one of his major goals, when he left the role of supervisor and became a councilman, was to make sure that we saw this through. So as I said, it's an opportunity that all of us on the town board felt and many other members of the community felt was a very good opportunity for the town. That's been the thought process of this all along.
Well, okay, I'm, look, at this point, you've had a lot more time to think about it than I have. But one thing that does bother me is that I don't get the sense that we're bringing new business into this town. I just don't see it. I've been here, I bought my home in 2003. I'm a full-time resident. And I've seen more businesses closed than open. And I'm just wondering, you know, I'd like to see us pull some kind of revenue in to the town as opposed to spending the money that we have. We're having a bond payoff. And instead of using that money for something else that may generate income, we're using that, rolling that debt into another debt. Granted, interest rates are low. I mean, that's been my whole life, my whole business career. So I understand where we are with rates. But what are we doing to generate income rather than buying or picking over the bones of a company that's moved on?
I think that it's not, the town doesn't have a infrastructure other than PEG, you might say, at developing new business. I mean, that's kind of why we have a contract with PEG. And she's out there finding us money to do what we can. And but the county of Delaware, and I guess the county might have forty-six, forty-eight thousand. And they have an IDA, they have a development arm, and they're the ones that are that are trying to get business. But, you know, Delaware County had forty-six thousand people in eighteen fifty. There's forty-six thousand people now. You know, I've been driving down Route thirty, you know, for the last thirty years. There isn't a new building. I think there was that self-storage building or something. You know, the cost of construction here in New York and particularly up here is astronomical relative to the traffic that you get. You just don't, you don't get the traffic to pay for the infrastructure. You don't get the traffic to pay for the facilities. And so it's, you know, but for the fact that this was developed for its natural resources in the eighteen hundreds, nothing would be here, you know? And, and, and so, you know, we, what we work on is trying to get broadband. We work on trying to get cell coverage and so that people can work here. But it's not, you know, it's, it's rural for a reason. And it's hard to get, you know, when you have to go from one town to another, you got to drive around the mountain, you know? So the town might be five miles away as a crow flies, but it's thirty miles away as the road goes. And so, I mean, we run the town or the town board runs the town to preserve what's there and to keep the taxes low and to do the best, make highest quality of life for the people that are here. And, and we have to look to others like the state or the county to help us bring in businesses. And the concern would be that this, this building, like we have other restaurants that are buildings that have just been laying vacant and vacant and vacant, you know? The other part about a lot of this is that when you have these older buildings under current laws, it's astronomical to restore them because you have asbestos and you have lead and you have all these different regulations. So, you know, it's, it's kind of the plot of the rural community that we live with, that not only we, but a lot of communities live with. But you're just not going to see development because it doesn't make economic sense.
Kevin, can I speak to that for a second? Is that possible?
Sure.
So Renee mentioned about STRs and how we use, you know, police and fire. And, you know, I just want to remind everybody, we do pay taxes too. And most of us actually are full-time members or full-time residents. But you mentioned IDA and, you know, a lot of people that are not familiar with short-term rentals know, we don't know that we pay an additional two percent to Delaware County. That two percent in five years, and I sent you guys that spreadsheet, you know, came in over a million. Roxbury is the biggest shareholder in that. However, we do not receive anywhere near what we should. And I just want to remind everybody, you know, we do get taxed, you know, and that, that tax, that two percent, we have no idea what goes on with that. Five hundred thousand of that million goes to administrative fees and programs that they won't discuss. So just, just want, you know, Renee and people that are kind of opposed to STRs to understand why we get a little bit of a bug in our bonnet because we're doing our share. And we would like to know where the two percent goes. I think you guys would love to know where the two percent goes to. So when you, you know, you refer to IDA and investing in Main Street, maybe we should get some of that money back.
Well, see, you and I had this conversation and I a hundred, a hundred percent understand what you're saying. And last number I heard with the county is there is roughly three hundred and some thousand dollars in that fund available for tourism promotion specifically. A portion of it gets used through the Chamber of Commerce, but there is a fairly large portion that's available for businesses for development. And I agree that a lot of it goes to the other side of the county. It is managed through a board that is in place through the county board of supervisors and through the Chamber of Commerce. Unfortunately, the individual communities do not have as much say in how that money gets used as we would like. And I understand that that's an issue. I'm not the only one on the board of supervisors that understands this. We are also one of the communities in the county that does pay a fair share of the county's taxes because of our assessment rates. We have many of the higher-end homes and higher-end properties, which means our residents pay much more in the overall assessment for the county. So that is an issue. It's something we're working on. As I said, you and I had this discussion a while ago. I can't say that there's any good answers for it right now. It is pretty much controlled by a board that was developed through the county board of supervisors and through the treasurer's office. So. And it is
Can I talk since Lucia directed it at me?
Okay, this is going to be the last one. I'm going to cut it off. Again, this STR conversation is something for another day. We've talked about it a lot tonight, and we do need to move on. We have a little bit more to go in our meeting. And I do need to cut the discussion off after this one.
Okay, I was just going to say there are issues about quality of life, having neighbors, that money doesn't really resolve. However, in addition to that, if someone came to purchase my home right now, I would feel, I wouldn't be honest if I didn't tell them that there were three STRs. And again, if I were them, I wouldn't want to purchase my home. And we've had a home for fifty years here, myself and my husband's family. And so there are so many issues. We never had an alarm system. After the third STR went in on the, I'll call it the block I live on, we had to put in an alarm system. So we don't know who these people are. It's, it's changing the environment of Roxbury. And it, you know, they'll get to a point that I know there are some people who live here, but there are some people, I understand, that are just buying houses to rent them out. And so there are many issues involved. Thank you.
All right. With that being said, we need to move on with our meeting. I appreciate everybody's comments. We will continue to do this at our future board meetings. Once again, I am available. Anybody has a question or a comment, I would be happy to speak with anybody. If you would like to contact me and set up a time, I would be glad to meet with you or speak with you about any of these issues. Or I'm sure any of the board members as well would also be willing to speak with you. But we do need to move on tonight. We have an awful lot more to cover so that we can all get home. And I thank everybody for your commitment to our community. And I thank you for your time in spending and listening to these comments. With that, we will cut off the public discussion session and we will move to our board resolutions so that we can finalize the night. First resolution is for the town clerk monthly report, supervisors monthly report, assessors monthly report, building inspectors monthly report, water district report, justice court monthly report, and tax collectors monthly report. You've received all of those in your pocket. Can I have a motion to accept these?
I make the motion.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. We still have a vacancy on our planning board. If anybody has a suggestion or has an interest, anybody on Zoom that has an interest in possibly getting involved with the community, we do have some openings available on our planning board. We would love to talk to you. As far as the Catskill Recreation Center donation that we spoke about over a couple of meetings, I did have a conversation with the director. She is to be, she's going to be getting back to us with some suggestions to what we can do with that. I know, Kevin, we are not able to just do a donation. We have
Identify her specifically.
Right. It has to be earmarked for a specific purpose. So she is going to come back to me with some suggestions. I haven't heard anything yet. We need to schedule a public hearing on the current CDGB program for our next meeting. We're looking at May tenth at six forty-five PM. Can somebody make that motion? Second? I jumped ahead, didn't I? I got, I got a, sorry about that. Denver sewer upgrade.
That we're just still working.
Yeah, there's no resolution there needed, I don't think. I didn't think so. And we discussed the community solar program before. Okay, highway. We did the resolution to, for the resignation of our highway employee.
And did you decide to do a fire one or you want?
Yes. Bill's going to get together with the with the highway superintendent, the highway committee, the personnel committee is going
Let's make a resolution for a new hire.
Okay, all right. So I need a resolution for a new hire to replace. Second? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we need a resolution to sponsor the fireworks for Labor Day. Denise, I know you gave us an application or contract. Okay, and once he gets the permit, that does need to be signed off by our tire chief as well. Okay, and just for anybody that's not aware, it's on Zoom. This is for the fireworks display that is done in the Perkside Park every year on Labor Day weekend. The town sponsors that, that display. Hopefully this year with things loosening up with COVID, we'll be in a position we can do more with that event other than remote fireworks like we did last year. And that's to be determined. But I do need a resolution for that. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie. We need a resolution for a liquor license or a waiver of the thirty-day hold by the town board on a liquor license application at Shepherd Hills Golf Course and Catering Center. And the resolution is by eight oh eight catering. All in favor? Any opposed? You all received information about a pole or a pole light change here in Grand Gorge. It's actually right in front of this building. They're moving a streetlight from one pole to the other. We need a resolution to allow that to happen for my sake. Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. We need a resolution. You all received a copy of the draft contract for Justin Stingle drafting to draft some simple drawings for the changes that we need to be made in the Midrocks building.
Make the resolution.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie. You've received the water project cost to date. Oh, okay, that'll be tabled. You'll get it for the next meeting. And water district. We did receive from Kevin's office a suggested change to the water district bylaws based on some of the issues we're having with working out sewer or water, water service connection issues as far as who's responsible where. We do that. We'll discuss it. And if you have any comments, we'll look at it possibly the next meeting. I believe we have to
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was the idea. Just the issue is you have a street lateral and you have a house lateral. Sometimes people's lateral comes under the road. And when there's a break, who's supposed to pay to fix it? So it's ambiguous now in the current law. So we just want to make it clear so everyone knows what the responsibility is.
And again, nothing to do there except we'll look at that in the future. If anybody has any comments or concerns on that, we can talk about it again. Last resolution we have is to pay the bills unless anybody has anything else. All in favor? Nobody's opposed to paying the bills, I'm sure. With that being said, does anybody here or anywhere have any other things that they would like to bring to the board? Not, I would like to call for a motion to go home.
I make that one.
Can I second that one? All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone that hung in there with us on the Zoom meeting. Once again, we appreciate your support. Thank you.